All right, there we go.
I present and put your name down. Put your name down if you don't want to, you can pass. I think we've represented your interest before and we will again tonight. You can nod.
Thanks for coming up.
Yes.
Camera action. No, 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 I'm building, no, I'm pumping it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's why they keep that nice one. Hey, good, how are you?
Yeah.
My pleasure to call the April 11th Joint Public Hearing in order at five thirty. We have a call for Ms. Hall to be back here soon.
Present.
Here. Present. Here.
Our quick public hearing tonight, our public comments regarding the proposed amendments to Section 200 of the subdivision ordinance regarding lighting requirements in Section 300 D52, sign ordinance regarding allowed signage in the case of.
Sure, the staff report for the streetlight starts on page one of the packet. As you'll recall, and we discussed with both bodies a couple of times, our streetlight ordinance for subdivisions in the past just said that streetlights were required. It didn't say how many, how far, night sky compliant, anything like that. So we looked at a lot of different sign ordinances. Some are very complicated for the larger localities. We didn't want to do that, but we did want to give some direction. The zoning administrator can help make some decisions on this, but the proposed ordinance is on page two. Does anybody want me to go over more of the details or did everybody have a chance to look at? Ask if anybody is here to speak on that. On that, this is streetlights. Okay, so then the second would be the sign ordinance. As you know, we've also talked about this numerous times. We have some difficulty in that the downtown center business district and the 42 business district are zoned the same, B1. A lot of times in a small town, you'll have, central business district will have a different zoning classification to be more at scale with the other. But we don't have that, but we have been working on allowing some of the businesses that have shared use in their building a little bit more signage, particularly, and you all have pictures, I think, at your desks, the Dayton Market has anywhere from, I don't know how many you have now, 100 or 15 to 20 businesses. They probably want streetlights. Did you guys want to speak on streetlights?
We'll just go back to that.
Okay, we just finished that, but we'll go back to it in just a minute. So the signs, as you know, Dayton Market has anywhere from probably 15 or 20 businesses at any given time, 20 in there. They have a large sign in the middle of the building on the triangular area, and then on the sides, they don't have any signage right now. They also have the digital sign out by 42. The sign ordinance actually had a, had a maximum of, it's based on one and a half square feet of signage for every linear foot of the building, just the front linear. And it was maxed at 100 square feet, which would mean that all the Dayton Market could have had had they not been grandfathered in as their one sign or the other. The Chief's Place is now open Tuesday through Saturday, and they would like some identification at their end of the building a little bit more. They have some on the window right now, which is allowed, that's not included in sign ordinance. And I don't know if somebody else would want to put something up on the other smaller area. So we looked at their sign. We also have the same issue on some of the properties in town that have several buildings on one parcel, and that would be where Hair Corral is. Hair Corral, what used to be Curd, Grammys, and the Water Gardens are all on one lot. And the way that the ordinance was written before, it would have been 100 square feet per lot, even though there's four distinct buildings, and a couple of those buildings probably would be considered corner lots, at least Grammys would be considered a corner lot, which has more signage. So what we proposed here is keeping the ratio the same, but moving, well, what you have has a blank on it, I think, but what we're recommending is 300, a maximum of 300 square, 350 square feet of total signage, which would allow Chief's Place at least 90. I need some square feet, so, would allow them, if they split it like 50 feet on either end, which is a little bit smaller than the middle sign, but I'm sorry. So, would allow them to put sign up at scale, not as big as the middle sign, because the thing isn't as big. Are there any questions from staff? I know you guys have heard this on our slides. And as a reminder, we were recodifying the whole town code, so this has been on our plate for three or four months. We now have the code recodified, so the ordinance is properly worded in here, should you choose to. Approve it. Again, on page five of the packet, at the very body, you'll see we need to decide on the square footage, but we think 350 square feet would give them and would keep Hair Corral Shopping Center in compliance. At least now, for the most part, except for the corner buildings, are narrow enough that the linear footage turns one and a half. Questions for staff? Okay. Total for all of that, but you would still get 75 at least, right? 75 square feet or? Well, 96 for the.
Thanks.
Yeah, I've seen 96, so 40, 40 to 50 square feet. Right. 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 That's the zoning administrator. Chris is the zoning administrator.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just for reference, the reason the subdivision agent is in there is that obviously, if spreading a light out 150 feet, we put it right in somebody's front lawn or bedroom window or something, and we have the flexibility to let them go every 200 feet or put it. It doesn't have to be exactly 150 feet. You know, obviously, we want to put them in between houses or. Did you close the public hearing?
I'll second it.
The second is the consideration of a proposed amendment to Section 300-852 of the sign ordinance regarding allowed signage in the district. I wonder if the motion is recommended that the council, the proposed amendment to Section 300-852, sign ordinance regarding allowed signage in the people in the district, as the.
350 square feet? Yeah, I'll make that motion, and thanks for coming up with this proposal issue that helps Chief's Place and others benefit from this more, I think, flex.
Get that to the front. No, you don't.
Yeah, I'll second. One at a time. I was looking at you guys.
I'll take a motion to.
Last meeting was over an hour, so it's.
Oh, the last six minutes.
Sign.
Ms. Lawrence, staff ready? Good evening and welcome, students. This is the largest number of students we have ever had in the council chambers. It's my pleasure to call the April 11th Dayton Town Council Meeting in order at 6 o'clock. Tonight's meeting is also on Zoom. We will not be taking any public comments on Zoom. None of you wanted to sign up to speak this evening? All right. All right, can we have a roll call, please, Ms. Hall?
Present.
Here. Frozen.
Present. Everybody can stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which he stands, one nation, under God, physical, liberty, justice, and.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to meet this evening. We thank you for all the youth who have come out this evening to learn about the democracy that operates this great land. We ask for your guidance in a matter before us this evening. We ask that you protect our first responders, the men and women in the military who serve across this great country, and hold close the Ukrainian people, both here and there. There are many family members here who are struggling with family members stuck there. Please watch over them, comfort them, we pray in your name. Amen. I need a motion to approve the minutes for the Reverend Town Council meeting of March 14th. Oh, I can't do that. Thank you, ma'am. We had, this past weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we had a lot of Shenandoah College alumni that were in town, and I was blessed to be able to have the opportunity to speak to them on Friday and got to hear a lot of stories. And the oldest person was celebrating his 75th year of graduating from Shenandoah College. And he had some great stories, and many of you are going to be going to college very soon, and his stories weren't too much different than the stories that you guys are going to be sharing later on in life. I talked to people that graduated 35, 45, 55, 65, I mean, that whole range, and the one thing that was consistent is their love for Dayton. They come back every year for this alumni group, and they have nothing but great things to talk about, the time that they spent in Dayton, the reason they come back, everybody treats them well, they feel like they're welcome, and it has always surprised me, the number of people that live in this town and have lived in this town for a number of years, that do not know that Shenandoah University started here in Dayton. We were the birthplace of Shenandoah University. So if you didn't know that, you learned something tonight. So when your teacher asks you what you learned, you can learn that Dayton is the birthplace of Shenandoah University. So we also dedicated a sign, which is out right in front of the Dayton Market. So as you're at the Dayton Market, you can go out there and learn some more of the history. So we did a proclamation declaring April 8, 2022, Shenandoah University Dayton Alumni Day. Whereas Dayton is the birthplace of Shenandoah University, which traces its origins to a school established by the Reverend Abram P. Funkhauser in 1875. And whereas known in its early years as Shenandoah Seminary, the coeducational, say that three times fast, coeducational institution, benefit from the support of the Virginia Annual Conference of the Church of the United Brethren in Christ, which took formal ownership in 1884. And whereas the school's name changed periodically as it evolved from a high school to a junior college to a four-year institution. And whereas in 1960, Shenandoah College and the Shenandoah Conservatory of Music, which had originated at the college music department, moved to Winchester, reuniting in 1974, and becoming Shenandoah University in 1991. Whereas on April 7th and 8th, the 2022 Dayton Alumni Reunion was planned for Dayton alumni to experience the Shenandoah University's historical marker unveiling ceremony, Dayton Alumni Hall of Fame induction, recognition of reunion classes, and to meet the Dayton scholarship recipients. And whereas the town of Dayton embraces its history as the birthplace of Shenandoah University and endeavors to preserve the college buildings. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I carry a jax, the mayor of the town of Dayton, Virginia, and on behalf of the Dayton Town Council and the citizens of Dayton, recognize the 8th day of April 2022 as Shenandoah University Dayton Alumni Day. So all of those words saying that we're very happy that we're the birthplace of Shenandoah University. I now need a motion to approve the minutes for Reverend Town Council meeting of April 14th in the council priority session of retreat on March 28th. Do I have a second? Thank you. Are there any amendments to the minutes? Ms. Hall?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Now, we had a joint public meeting to kind of give you guys an idea of what's going on tonight, and we're looking at two different amendments. So as I read these amendments, we've had our, a joint public meeting earlier, we had our planning commission make motions to us, and now we're going to act on what their suggestions were, just to kind of give you an idea of how this all works. I need a motion to approve the proposed amendment to Section 20-141 of the subdivision ordinance regarding lighting requirements as recommended by the planning commission. Ms. Esses, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Hall, real call, please.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you. I need a motion to approve the proposed amendment to Section 30-852 of the sign ordinance regarding allowed signage in the B1 zoning district as recommended by the planning commission. Mr. DiJack, Mr. Seward, does a second. Oh.
Agreed.
350. Thanks, ma'am. And we have Mr. DiJack as the motion, and Mr. Seward as the second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Hall.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes, thank you. All right, during this time, we usually have a public comments or anything. We didn't have anybody sign up. We did have people that signed up to speak at our early joint meeting, but we didn't have any additional public comments during this time. So now we'll go right into staff reports, starting with Ms. Lawrence.
My report is on page 15. I do have some exciting news. We did have a conference call with a part of the community. Governor. Andrew Pease, and the plans to get a planning grant for the downtown revitalization project. At no cost of, of, up to $50,000, so I'll go over that. That would include engineering, process units, facilitating, and, but everything that we've needed in order for a year or two for us to be able to submit to grant for the downtown revitalization, which includes, maybe, 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 back alleys are very, and, but then new pedestrian scale streetlights, maybe with some, maybe, maybe, maybe. Which is sidewalks, whatever we come up with. We can also look at the 42 corridor, now that size into downtown, we can also look at the ability of a way to get pedestrians, bicycles, or buses from the market to. It would be a downtown revitalization grant. It doesn't have a match for, although they do look at leverage, so any private investment that's been made downtown, that areas, as well as. Some of these grants actually. Up ahead of that, so, anyway, so that was exciting. That was today, the machine's going to help us, we've gotten online, and started. Staff also met with Flow Fiber. They will start in August. They're already doing engineering, not everybody else, they'll start with Phase One, as I mentioned last time, 42 corridor or two, about, I don't know, it's, on the capacity, so. That's supposed to start in August, it takes about 45 days, and it'll go, you know, through conferences, actually, take about 45 days, and then the last two are. So that's exciting, no, people have been looking, we did ask that they reach out to everybody, ahead of time, before they survey or before they start working, we can allow them, and also, maybe, like, different planes, or, maybe through Saturday, seven to seven, so they would have to be like.
Two most exciting things I know. Did you say that they were actually going to work on the grant? You felt, not us? Yeah, halfway. That was just, they were going to work on the grant.
So it's almost right, granted, although, the many grant applications, it's all of eight functions. Every, all the information I gave today was, was in that application. They can, though, administer, with the administration, and, so, with implementation grants, which can be much more, I've worked on this, with this department, and other things like that. It's on a rolling basis, they just start taking applications in April, and we probably won't get it done by Friday, which is.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Now we'll go to Chief Trout. Oh, I am so sorry, Ms. Smith. I just want to give you a little bit extra time to prepare. Thank you. Now with that extra time, are you prepared for your report?
I think so. I think I'm good. Mayor and council, we have the treasurer's staff report and the financials. I have nothing else to add to that. Any questions?
Digging on, did all that on Thursday morning?
Thursday morning, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Now we'll go back to Ms. Lawrence, Public Works.
All right, Public Works report is on page 20. We're still looking for one building on ground specification to work this summer, either full-time, replaced, making a position or part-time, because our other seasonal groups have been reviewing it full-time. So whoever we get, probably seen that inmates working more around town. They've been greatly good all the months. Ask the... The Bridgewater, I have not heard from Bridgewater. Ask them when those streets... But they are going to bring ours down when they... Street sweep for Red Bud. With that, I should also mention that most of you know by now that Main Street is going to be... I'm going to start down, or I'm sorry, starting tomorrow. Starting down at the Blacksmith Shop, all the businesses and residents I've made, forgotten. Those have already begun today. It takes four good weather, and I think we are going to have good weather, colorful, good weather days, protecting, although they get off early in the morning. So Main Street might go into use then. And then that will be that section of public between 42 and Main Street. Which, I promise will be done before Red Bud, but it... I see that. I see that. It will be done before Red Bud, but it will maybe enter through the... The water out of there. Right before it, because of all, they were going to take our driver, our staff, and train them.
Did they accept the offer?
Yes, yes, they did accept the offer.
Yes.
Yep. Just waiting for their machines to arrive.
You did such a great job with that one, just clean out the water.
They're writing water report. I use the water pump without... That report's on page 21. Any questions on that? Besides water, they've been landscaping. About a bunch of the Bradley looking, that landscaping, it's going to take some while. Trying to get some new stuff in. They're supposed to do the greenway, all the bushes along there were done. Place a degree of... Yeah, they have a different place. The other landscaping around town, you know, the stuff. Down, also makes sense. We will add seasonal color and making here. But the gateways, it's still heavy. The pods for Red Bud are probably still going to have the pansy. We always fight with frost and freezing, right? The timing of Red Bud's not great, so we did go hit the colorful pansy.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Ms. Hall for Community Development. Thank you very much. And get the breath back. We'll go right back to you for...
Let's go to page 23 now. I'm happy to say that Red Bud is full. In fact, we had one person drop out and somebody took a spot. We might have one other person on the way to lunch, but not... But it's full. We have added a children's area this year down at Fifth Street, so there'd be an inflatable. Have a national line out. It's a touch of property that are things like that. We will have the... There'll be two of those properties, but we should be able to see the children's. They could get a obstacle. The plate goes down. Close to that end, so people can see that there's children. So that should be fun. We do have volunteers from PA. We do have some volunteers there and some others. So happy for that. East Ray Park will be this Saturday at Sunset Park. At East... At any rate, if we don't have... We can just have volunteers do the helping. 1500 eggs out in the morning. And then you can see the conference schedule. We still have a couple spots we haven't found. Fans for a couple people. You can't read these here that we're hoping that... We will be getting, I'm sorry, we'll be getting that half-page first start for August.
For those of you that are on the football team, you may not know it yet, but on August 6th, you'll be helping at the... So in case you hadn't heard that, you're hearing it now.
And it waits till... Because I haven't done enough before to try to highlight something. That's not in the future report, but the police chief is going to have a town hall meeting on... May 13th.
Yes.
What's that? I believe it's May 13th. We had to move it a couple of times. So that's an opportunity for residents and business owners to come in, meet with the chief, and get your questions answered. I think it's May or two. Seventeen, sorry? We changed it a few times.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Mr. Bowman.
I have nothing to report. It's good to be back with you all.
We love to hear that. When Mr. Bowman talks, it ends up costing the town money because he's our legal counsel. So when it's not, not a lot to talk about, it's good for the town.
If you're still looking into a career.
All right. So now what we're going to do, we have committee reports. So the council members serve on different committees. So each committee chair is going to give a report on what that committee has worked on or has worked not. So we'll start with Mr. Dyjak for Economic and Community Development.
Sir, just briefly, just excited for Red Bud, so hopefully everyone can make it out there. I think it'll be a great event. And thank you, staff, for doing a fantastic coordination of that. You know, I guess that credit to, for also, they went to the Greater Ashby Business Council networking session on town behalf that was held at Rock Town History last month. Appreciate Ms. Lawrence and Ms. Rose for going and representing the town and welcoming businesses here. That's a good networking opportunity. Hopefully some of our businesses will be able to take advantage of that, too. The only other thing I note is that we do have the Business Conversation Series hosted here at Town Hall on April 27th at 5:30. So we will be excited to get back here and have some conversation planned ahead for the next couple of months ahead. And right, we can talk a little bit more about the downtown revitalization grant strategy session as well. So see that come to fruition. And thank you, staff, for, it's a great effort on getting that, especially the grant. Starting. Well, I got...
Fine job.
There you go. Well, I think the budget's all set and done, so we're all good. That's what I think Ms. Smith had mentioned, right? She said budget's fine. We're good. No, but we just knocked it out. There you go. Yeah, exactly. So just if I may, for the benefit of students, we, the town will be working on its annual budget. We actually work on our fiscal year starts in July. So this is now the time where we start taking all the priorities and, you know, and desires to keep the town running and actually put it into budget form. And that guides our decisions and what the town staff and council can spend in the next year. So that's with everything from your taxes, all the, you know, water, sewer, to, you know, all the other, you know, police services and everything else between. So we're in the middle of that. So there you go. It's a exciting time. There you go. So if you're into numbers, there you go. This is, this is your time. But anyway, we'll be meeting, Finance Committee will be meeting Thursday to, to go over the proposed budget before we have our book session.
Thank you, Mr. Dyjak. Mr. Seward, Infrastructure.
Those report, but Ms. Lawrence is still there. We actually have a general contract with Water.
All right, sir. Parks Recreation and Beauty. And Ms. Mathias Personnel.
We did not meet this month. We had two months previous. Add his report this month.
And Ms. Seward for Police.
Police met. Budget plans for the cycle. Upcoming meetings about that.
Now, as you've heard everybody talk about budget, the budget, you know, Mr. Dyjak made it sound really easy. You just put some stuff together. Hey, throw it together, you're done. It is a monumental undertaking every year. The, each committee meets, they talk about priorities with staff. Staff meets and, you know, hats off to them, especially Ms. Smith, because she's our treasurer. But it truly is a monumental effort, and it is a months-long process. Council has extra meetings. We had a meeting two weeks ago. We're going to have another meeting coming up. So, you know, for you guys, you know, when you're talking about in your classes about government and stuff like that, there truly is a lot of things that go into play in order to run any type of municipality. The other part of that is, as everybody up here will attest, and everybody up here probably agrees, that everything takes too long in government. But the reason that most of the things take too long is protecting the citizens. Because if we could just do whatever we wanted behind closed doors, not that we would do that, but others would, you know, take advantage of that situation. So the reason that government does take so long is because truly is to protect the taxpayers. You know, I talked a little bit, we're getting into our mayor and council comments. I talked a little bit about the Shenandoah University in here. And it really was great to hear all their stories and their love for the town that, you know, we all love as well. We had our council priority session, and Cheryl Lyons, who's not here tonight, she's done a great job creating a meeting space, what used to be the gift shop in the mill. So, and I spoke to her after we met and just told her what a great, you know, great space it was. And in fact, like everything that Ms. Lyons does, she goes over the top. The signs that she had when we greeted. So if your parents are looking for any type of meeting space, you know, the mill has a great space down there. It's a very inviting space. You know, one of the other things I'm going to, you know, Ms. Lawrence. Why you need that book? Staff has meetings, and I would happen to be in the meet, or in the building last week when they were getting ready for their breakfast meeting. And anybody that knows Ms. Lawrence knows, she is not a morning person. But when they have staff meetings, she made fresh biscuits. She was in there making waffles, making biscuit gravy. So that is over and above what you do day in and day out for your staff. So thank you very much for what you do. And I know that they appreciate it as well.
That's not part of my 40-hour work.
When have you ever only worked 40 hours?
You're welcome.
Does any other council members have any comments? We have no unfinished business. Do we have any new business? So I want to thank all of you for coming out this evening. This is by far the largest number of students that we have ever had. We've had six, eight, 10, but you know, we're over 20 tonight. So thanks for coming out. Hope you learned something about the operation of the town. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second? All in favor? All opposed? Meeting adjourned.